Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Environmental Protection, Resiliency, and Waterfronts. If you would like to testify, you must fill out a testimony slip at the Sergeant Arm Desk. If you would like to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Just a reminder, no one may approach the dais at any time during this hearing. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant. Good morning. I'm Councilmember Jim Gennaro, Chair of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Resiliency, and Waterfronts. Today, we will be holding an oversight hearing on lead service lines. The committee will also hear two pieces of legislation related to the replacement of lead service lines in New York City and the fair allocation of funding for lead service line replacement. The committee welcomes testimony from the Department of Environmental Protection, advocates, and interested members of the public. The effects of lead poisoning are most pernicious in children who can suffer physical and behavioral effects, cognitive impairment, and developmental delays due to lead exposure. In 2021, 2,557 New York City children under the age of six had elevated blood lead levels when tested. While even a single case of elevated blood lead level in a child is tragic, albeit inevitable due to the prevalence of lead paint and other vectors of lead contamination, the city is taking great strides in reducing lead poisoning, and this number is a tenth of what it was not even two decades ago. But, so what? 2,557 cases is still a very big number. Throughout my career, dating back to my time as a policy analyst with this committee, I am proud to have helped New York City lead in the fight against lead poisoning. My particular area was managing the hazards caused by lead paint, particularly chewable surfaces as well as friction surfaces and contact surfaces. Anyone involved in lead knows what that all means. But, back to lead hazards from water. Thankfully, DEP monitors drinking water and threats to our municipal water supply with a chemical agent to minimize lead leaching from service lines and plumbing fixtures, minimizing drinking water as a vector for lead poisoning in the city. According to the latest New York City Drinking Water Supply and Water Quality Report, 90% of drinking water samples had a lead concentration below 11 parts per billion, which is below the current federal action level of 15 parts per billion. However, the new federal rule, which we'll get into in the hearing, which the EPA will finalize this fall, reduces the lead action level to 10 parts per billion. And 10% of samples, according to information provided by staff, and 10% of the samples did have lead concentrations in excess of 11 parts per billion of lead. That's a lot. The committee looks forward to hearing from DEP on how it plans to reduce lead concentrations in the water supply or comply with mitigation requirements that would be triggered if the lead concentration level remains at its current level. While DEP's efforts to reduce lead poisoning are certainly commendable, they are not a permanent solution to the risk posed by the approximately 130,000 potential lead service lines and 210,000 service lines of unknown material that remain in the city. In addition to hearing from the administration on the oversight topic, the committee will hear the following legislation sponsored by me. Intro Number 942 would require property owners to replace lead service lines and to obtain a certification stating that the property does not have a lead service line within 10 years. DEP would be required to establish a financial assistance program for low-income property owners, and they would need to replace lead service lines in properties where childcare programs are located for free. Sergeant, I wonder if we're getting any feedback here? Is there like a feedback going on? Is there...am I too close or whatever? How's it sound out there? Sorry? All right, fine. Where was I? And Resort Number 8 would call upon the New York State Department of Health and the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation to fairly, repeat, fairly allocate funding for lead service line replacement approved in the federal bipartisan infrastructure law and to remove all rules preventing New York City from receiving its fair share of funding. I think that sentence bears repeating because we don't get what we deserve. Resort 8 would call upon the New York State Department of Health and the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation to fairly allocate funding for lead service line replacement approved in the federal bipartisan infrastructure law and to remove all rules preventing New York City from receiving its fair share of funding. I said it twice. Good. Together, we can eliminate lead poisoning from drinking water once and for all and secure a brighter future for New York City's children. I would like to thank the committee's staff. Committee Counsel Claire McLaughlin, Policy Analyst Ricky Chala, and Andrew Born, Financial Analyst Tanvera Singh, and my Chief of Staff Henry Yam, and my new, brand-new, freshly-minted Legislative Director Josh Gachet. Josh Gachet. I hired him, and now I have to figure out how to say his name right. And so, thank you, Josh, for joining the team. This is his first hearing. And I'd like to recognize the following members who have joined us. Councilmember Aviles and Councilmember Holden, both great friends and colleagues. That's it for now, right? I turn it over to you. Okay. I will now turn it over to the committee counsel to give the affirmation to the witnesses. I would call the panel from DEP forward. And, oh, I have slips with names. Ritt Agarwal, Commissioner, Catherine Mallon, Chief Operating Officer, Paul Rush. Paul Rush, I haven't seen Paul in a while. Thank you for being here. Paul does all the upstate stuff. He's the Deputy Commissioner of the Bureau of Water Supply. Jeanette, help me out here. Aristi, Director of Project and Business Operations Management, Bureau of Water and Sewer Operations, DEP. That is a good team to have with us here today. And, as we mentioned before, it is Ritt's birthday, so happy birthday, Ritt. It's also Paul McCartney's birthday. I asked Sir Paul to be with us. His people have not gotten back to me, but I wish him a happy 82nd birthday. And so, yeah, and so...I remember when the first Beatles album came out and every Beatle album that came out in succession. And if you weren't there for it, you really missed it. And so, until Sergeant Pepper came out and no one knew anything, people thought they went sideways at that point, but then, now we know differently. And so, I'm going to put my distance glasses on. Oh, no, I have to read his testimony. And so, they're sworn, right? You did that?
Nope.
Okay, then, fine. Get wrapped up in my own rhetoric that I forget to run a hearing.
Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to councilmember questions?
I do.
Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Thank you. Thank you, Ritt. We've got a little feedback going on, and thank you for working on that. We doing okay with that? And we're also joined by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, a valued member of this committee. You know, I was talking to Paul McCartney recently. He was talking about feedback issues he has when he's on stage. So, it's part of being born on June 18th, the feedback thing.
So, cross I have to bear?
Yeah. Well, we just waited. So, I guess the gentleman on the board is working on the feedback thing, right? Okay. All right, we good? Okay.
All right.
Okay, I think we're good.
Excellent. Well, thank you and good morning, Chair Gennaro, members of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Resilience, and Waterfronts. My name is Rohit T. Agarwal, and I'm the Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection. And as the chair noted, I'm joined by a couple of my colleagues, Deputy Commissioner Paul Rush, and our Director of Project and Business Operations Management at BWSO, Janet Aristi, to discuss this important topic of lead service lines. This is a detailed and complex topic, so I want to make sure that everyone understands a few key takeaways from my testimony. First, New York City tap water is safe, healthy, and delicious. People should not hesitate to drink New York City water. Second, the Federal Environmental Protection Agency is issuing a new lead and copper rule revision that will require all lead service lines to be replaced regardless of whether lead is found in that building's water or not. This is not a decision New York City has made. Third, there are at least 130,000 lead service lines in New York City, and we estimate the full number is roughly 150,000. We estimate that replacing all the lead service lines will cost about $2 billion. These service lines are privately owned. They are part of the building. Some of them are in low-income neighborhoods; some of them are in high-income neighborhoods. We have been working to identify grants and other funding to help homeowners replace lead service lines, but we do not expect ever to have full funding to pay for all of these private replacements. Further, while the federal government has made funding available, that funding is something like 1/10th the total need around the country, and New York State places, as you've just noted, Councilmember, arbitrary limits on what we in New York City can receive. The bottom line is that while we will, of course, maximize external funding, we cannot expect all the funding we need to come from somewhere else. So, what has changed about lead? Our current focus on lead service lines stems from the EPA's recent determination that there is no safe level of lead in drinking water. This is not universally applied. For example, the U.S. Food and Drug Administration permits a lead level of 5 parts per billion in bottled water. EPA's mechanism for this is the Lead and Copper Rule, which sets maximum permissible levels of lead and lays out requirements to minimize contaminant levels. The original Lead and Copper Rule went into effect in 1991. DEP has a long record of compliance with this rule. The LCR has been revised twice in recent years, first in 2021, and those revised standards go into effect this year. Further revisions were made in 2023, creating the Lead and Copper Rule improvements, which are expected now to go into effect in 2027. These newest standards are the most stringent yet. We are focused on how to meet those standards. The LCI also sets new testing requirements and a lower lead action level, which is the lead value that triggers action requirements by the water utility. Under the new rule, compliance testing will focus on buildings with known lead service lines, use water sitting in the service line for at least six hours, and have a new lower standard of 10 parts per billion, down from 15 parts per billion. With this approach, it is likely that New York City, and we expect all cities with any lead service lines, will exceed the action level. If we do, the new EPA requirement will oblige DEP to notify all residents in the entire city, even those who do not have a lead service line, that lead levels have exceeded the action level. This will likely cause confusion and distrust in New York City water, even among residents who face no lead exposure whatsoever. Further, the LCI will now also require every city to develop a plan to remove lead service lines regardless of whether water quality testing shows elevated levels of lead in tap water. Replacing all privately-owned lead service lines has not been a requirement before, so we are working now to develop this plan. The legislation being considered today, which I will discuss in a few minutes, supports this goal. What is our service line exposure? First, lead does not come from New York City's drinking water supply. Our water comes from a series of reservoirs and controlled lakes upstate where Deputy Commissioner Rush's team ensures its quality. Every day, a billion gallons of water comes down through our aqueducts and water tunnels, flows through 7,000 miles of water mains, and is delivered to every home and business around the city. There are no lead pipes whatsoever in the city's water distribution system. Lead risk enters at the service line. A service line is the pipe that connects an individual building to the city's water main under a street. In New York City, DEP is responsible for the water mains, but the service line is private property even though it extends into the roadway. This is established, I will note, in case law dating as far back as 1861 and affirmed as recently as 2005. In the past, many service lines for smaller buildings, mainly 1-4 family homes, were made of lead. When water sits in a lead pipe, particularly for several hours, lead can leach into the water. New York City banned lead service lines in 1961, but an estimated 150,000 buildings in the city still have old lead service lines. There are about 130,000 known lead service lines. Another 200,000 or so are made of unknown material. DEP has been systematically investigating these lines to determine their makeup, and based on inspection results thus far of about 30,000 lines, we expect about 10% of them are made of lead. So, that adds another 20,000. That brings the total of what we expect to be lead service lines across the city up to 150,000. This represents about 17% of all properties in New York City, and we use this 150,000 estimate for our planning and cost estimate purposes. It is important to note that even homes served by lead service lines are not necessarily at immediate risk. Unlike many other cities, New York City treats our water with pH adjustments and the addition of food-grade corrosion inhibitors, known as orthophosphates, to minimize the likelihood of lead leaching. These corrosion inhibitors react with lead in a service line to form a coating that seals off the lead from the water flowing within it, dramatically reducing the possibility of lead leaching into the water. While highly effective, these are not perfect, so they cannot eliminate all risk, but they account for the fact that many homes with lead service lines do not show elevated levels of lead. We maintain a public online map that shows which buildings in the city have lead service lines, have non-lead service lines, and have service lines of unknown material. We encourage everyone to look up their building with this map. If a home has a lead service line, we encourage you, or the owner, to test your water for lead. Anyone in the city can call 311 to get a free lead test kit.
All right, just hang on. I just like lost my place. I was doing so well, like...
Page four.
Top page four?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Please continue. Sorry for the interruption.
DEP will mail the test kit with instructions to residents who request one. The recipient simply fills the provided containers with tap water according to the directions and sends it back to DEP using the prepaid return label. Our team will test the water and provide the results to the resident. If results show that there is lead in your home's water, there are simple steps you can take to reduce exposure risk. Running cold water especially first thing in the morning so that you do not drink water that has been stagnant in the service line overnight. Use a water filter that is certified to remove lead. Finally, of course, replace your service line. Replacing a lead service line is the single most effective way to reduce the risk of lead contamination from tap water. All of this is not to say that the water is not safe to drink, even if you have a lead service line. The New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene has never determined that a case of elevated lead levels has been caused by drinking water in New York City. In 2018, then Acting Commissioner of DOHMH, Oxiris Barbat, testified that, quote, "Lead in water does not present a meaningful risk to New Yorkers, and we do not consider water a significant source of exposure for children," unquote. Where other cities, such as Newark and Flint, have seen true lead emergencies, it has been because their water or their water systems either did not or could not apply the orthophosphates that provide New York City's first line of defense against lead. These are not comparable situations. So, what are we doing? Our work to replace lead service lines has already begun. First, there are no lead service lines in the city's water system or on any city property, including schools and public housing properties. Every two years, DEP reviews all city-owned and leased properties to ensure that any properties that have entered the city's portfolio do not have lead service lines. To address lead service lines on private property, we have enacted rules to ensure that broken lines are replaced and have implemented a program to replace lines during water or sewer main work and have managed replacement programs using grant funding. First, for wear and tear. In 2009, DEP clarified our rules to require a lead service line to be replaced if it is leaking or broken. In those cases, property owners are responsible for hiring a licensed master plumber to replace the whole service line from the water main in the street to the meter inside the property. This type of job typically takes one day and costs between $10,000 and $15,000, depending on the property's configuration. If a property owner has warranty coverage for their service line, such as the On Course American Water Resources Service Line Protection that can be paid for through their water bill, these replacements are covered expenses, and the property owner does not have to pay anything out of pocket. Approximately 1,500 lead service lines are replaced every year due to wear and tear. Construction-driven replacements. Beginning next fiscal year, the Department of Design and Construction will replace lead service lines at no cost to property owners for properties that are impacted by water main or sewer work in the street. DEP has already begun the same protocol on our own in-house projects. Approximately 700 lead service lines are expected to be replaced every year as part of this program. Finally, the Neighborhood Replacement Program. In 2019, DEP administered a small, state-funded lead service line replacement program to replace services for about 600 low-income property owners. Since then, DEP has secured $20 million in federal grants, and I apologize, there's a typo here, 28 million is the correct number, in zero-interest loans as part of the federal bipartisan infrastructure law to continue this work. Let me spend a moment on this last point. We have applied for about $96 million to replace said lead service lines in six environmental justice neighborhoods in the Bronx, Brooklyn, and Queens that demonstrated severe financial hardship. But, we have been limited by New York State policy to receiving just the $48 million split between grants and loans that I just mentioned. This represents less than a quarter of statewide distributed funds. If New York State disbursement rules for the bipartisan infrastructure law funding do not change, New York City anticipates receiving only another $72 million in the future, bringing the city's total to 120 million, which is $50 million in grants and $70 million in low-interest loans. Over the five years of anticipated funding, DEP expects to replace about 7,300 lead service lines with this money. And I will remind you, a low-interest loan is still just a loan. It is money that has to be paid back. This is all a great help, but it is far short of the $2 billion needed. We are receiving significantly lower funding per capita than other regions around the state, and while we have been in active discussions with the state to fight for our fair share, they have not changed their policies. These existing programs, replacements done to wear and tear, Neighborhood Replacement Program, and construction-driven replacements, together will replace about 3,500 lead service lines each year through 2028. At current pace, these three programs will take 50 years to eliminate all the lead service lines in the city. These efforts are not enough. An intentional, dedicated program is needed. Based on actual bids we have received on recent lead service line replacement contracts, replacing all the estimated 150,000 lead service lines will cost around $2 billion, assuming that average replacement cost of $15,000. We are still working to understand if lead service line replacement is a water-rate-eligible cost, but if it were, we expect that water rates would have to be increased to fund this work. Otherwise, funding will need to come from the city's general fund. We must carefully weigh whether this investment should be borne by all ratepayers and taxpayers. There are many low-income homes in New York City with lead service lines. There are also many homes worth $1 million, $2 million, and $3 million that also have lead service lines, and the data on all of this is appended to my testimony. It is not clear that these homes should receive a free upgrade at the expense of all ratepayers or taxpayers. And on to Intro 942. There is no simple path forward to replace all lead service lines in the city. Doing so will be costly, and it will take time. City Council legislation is an important tool to help us achieve our replacement goals, and Intro 942 is a great start. In short, this bill requires property owners to replace their lead service lines within 10 years of the date the law takes effect and the city to establish a financial assistance program and replace lead service lines for certain properties. I want to thank the chair for introducing this bill and the committee for hearing it. We look forward to working with the council to build on these proposals. I'd like to speak about a few pieces we'd like to incorporate into legislation. First, we appreciate that the legislation creates an obligation on homeowners to replace lead service lines. This is important because we have already seen in New York and elsewhere that even when offered a free replacement, homeowners often decline because they fear it will be a hassle. We will spend money less effectively if there is no mandate on homeowners. Second, we appreciate that in some circumstances, the legislation will require property owners to replace lead service lines themselves, such as upon the sale of a home. It is important to remember that by definition, any lead service line is more than 60 years old and should be replaced in any event over the next few decades. Third, we agree that some public assistance for low-income homeowners is warranted, but we would like any financial assistance program included in the bill to be flexible enough that we can create a variety of programs for different populations and can adapt programs over time based on our experience. Finally, we agree that a fully centralized, fully publicly-funded approach is not likely either to be the best for New York City nor the most cost-effective. We will have other suggestions for further refining this bill, and we look forward to working with you and council staff to make this legislation as effective as possible. I want to again thank the council and particularly Chair Gennaro for your partnership in this area. My colleagues and I are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, for your comprehensive testimony and all of your great work, you and your colleagues, on this matter to date. Have we even drawn any other members? Okay. As is my normal way of starting my questioning, I normally go through your statement, your testimony, which I made notes. I might even go back to my opening statement because my opening statement had some information that was provided to me by staff. And...I just thought of doing this. That's why I didn't make marks in my opening remarks, but now I think I want to do that. Here we go. According to the latest New York City Drinking Water Supply and Water Quality Report, 90% of drinking water samples had a lead concentration below 11 parts per billion, which is below the current federal action level of 15 parts per billion. However, the new federal rule, we talked about that, will reduce the action level to 10 parts per billion, and 10% of the samples did have lead concentrations in excess of 11 parts per billion of lead, and my remarks indicated that that was a lot. Did you find this information to be accurate?
Councilmember, yes, that is from our published data. The one thing I would point out is it's important to note, that is not a citywide sample. That is a sample of homes with lead service lines.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Right, so it's not at all the case that 10% of all homes around the city
Right.
had lead levels at that level. It was 10% of that sample.
Right, okay. No, I certainly appreciate that context. And someone mentioned to me the other day, I'm just kind of going all over the place today. It's, you know, that, you know, we've got the new, you know, we've got the new Lead and Copper Rule finalized later this year. Why are you doing this, Jim? Why don't you just...this is going to be promulgated, and it's going to be DEP's problem, and I'll just let them do it, you know? And I said, no, I think we should work in partnership and get it right, the administration working, you know, with the council to, you know, develop the funding mechanisms, to talk to advocates about how that would work, to try to create more pressure on the state to be fair. But, what would happen if we just didn't do this bill? We're doing the bill. So, you know.
Well, look, I think a couple of things that I noted in the testimony, the mandate is actually really important. So, I mentioned that in 2019, we did the sample, I think it was 600 homes that we were able to do with a small pot of state money, and fully one-third, this was targeted at low-income homeowners with a known lead service line. Fully one-third of the homeowners we offered turned it down.
They replaced it.
Exactly. Because there was no mandate on them, and that has to come from the city council because there was no mandate. They said, no, it's too much trouble. It might tear up the flower bed. I just don't want the hassle. Right? And so, the most important thing for us is there has to be a mandate
Right.
so that homeowners see this as, you know, this is the same as fire protection, sprinklers, window guards. This is a responsibility of owning a home. This is a responsibility particularly if you're renting out a home as a landlord.
Thank you. And people should know- And people should know, people know me by now, but, you know, when I ask a question, a lot of times I already know the answer, I just want to put it on the record, and so thank you for that. And on the first page of your statement, you, I think, two places in your statement, that service lines are privately owned, you mentioned on the first page, and then you talked, then on page three, there was case law about that, and you and your team do this every day, and so we have, so we have what amounts to, and even though you indicate that the lead service line is private property, even, you know, even as it hooks up to the main, which is in the middle of the street, I believe once upon a time, when we were under the Jamaica Water Service, I think the Jamaica Water Service, which is now like defunct, they had a situation where the Jamaica Water Service was responsible for the lead service line, or all service lines, from the main to the property line, and then from the property line to the building was the responsibility, so they used to work it a little differently, and I would imagine that everyone who was in the former Jamaica Water Service, old service area, still by, so now everyone's on the same page. It goes from, so like the entirety of the lead service line, from the main to, I guess we're in interest of the building, is private property, so was that how that was worked out?
That's right, New York City, well, so as I said, it has been New York City's practice that dates back in case law to eighteen sixty-one, it's been reaffirmed as recently as two thousand and five in litigation, and it's been accepted by the State Department of Health.
Right.
So this is just our practice.
Okay, and so, somewhere in your statement, I will go through them, but you indicated that it was still being looked at as to whether or not the cost of replacing the service lines could come from, you know, water and sewer fees, or maybe the general fund, and I'm not a lawyer, but it gets into the issue of city putting dollars into private property. Could you just kind of expand on that a little bit?
Sure, so, so the city charter prohibits improvements to private property except for a clear public purpose, and I'm not a lawyer, I would need to get a legal counsel to say more about that, but the way I, the way I understand it and the way it functionally shapes our programming, is that when we are using certain kinds of city dollars, we can only do programs that are means-tested. And that included that initial state program that I talked about from 2019, it could only be used for low-income homes. It was one of its shortcomings, I actually visited one site that we were still doing right when I became Commissioner, and there were four lead service lines interconnecting at the same place, we opened up the street, we could only change one of them, because only one of them was low-income.
I see.
The federal money does not contain that limitation, so we can use that federal money more freely to make investments in private properties. And then, as you know very well, Chair, there are a lot of legal constraints that go back to state law that authorizes the water system and the Water Board, that determine what water utility funding can be paid for. We have been working with bond council at the Water Board and the Municipal Water Finance Authority, but we do not yet have a final determination on whether water utility money could be used for the service line replacements.
Well, you know, certainly, I mean, I felt it was important to, you know, go forward with the bill and, you know, get things going and, you know, catalyze the conversation between the council, the administration, and all stakeholders about possible, you know, funding mechanisms, just to just put some clay on the wheel, just to kind of, you know, get it going. And I see this as a collaboration, you know, between the council and the administration and various stakeholders to do what we need to do to fashion the best funding mechanisms for this, you know, including advocacy by many of the people in this room, to their state representatives and to the governor, and so I think this all, so we're kind of all in this together, and so, so even though, you know, we didn't have any, you know, every conceivable financial pathway, we're just unable to write it into the bill right now because it doesn't exist, so, you know, and we've talked about this, and so, you know, this is the beginning of a conversation of how we can have, you know, the best program financed in the best and most fair way. Do you, is that how you see this?
Yes, completely, and one of the things that I think this bill, the approach it outlines, actually makes it possible to have a variety of funding mechanisms and programs. So, for example, there's no inconsistency, and in fact, I think there's a great deal of synergy between the bill having an overarching mandate on homeowners.
Right.
But we will also be able to do the targeted geographic effort that I describe in here that will use the federal money, where we have identified low-income neighborhoods with high concentrations of lead service lines, so those we could do, you know, go in and hopefully do the whole block, again, we'll get much higher participation rates if the homeowners know they have a mandate to do this work. But there are other programs that we are still figuring out how we might, for example, I mentioned the company that does insurance for lead service lines. That means they have a network of master plumbers who can come replace any service line, but they can replace a lead service line very quickly. It's a very easy, standard thing for a master plumber to do. That company has expressed interest in providing some sort of standardized package to New Yorkers who have lead service lines. We've been approached by a different company that does insurance products that would, that are interested in a similar offering.
Right.
We don't have to provide it, it could just be something that emerges on the private market. Similarly, we're exploring a number of different mechanisms through which we might scale up work in low-income neighborhoods.
Right.
So, we're still working on that, but I think one of the things I appreciate is by setting an armature, by creating this mandate and alerting homeowners to the fact that this is your responsibility to fix at some time, number one, it gives homeowners the ability to plan for it. You know, if you own a two-million-dollar home, planning for a fifteen-thousand-dollar expense with ten years' notice is not the end of the world. Like, that is manageable if you have a fair timeframe. And we can, this will give us a lot of flexibility.
Yeah, and certainly, you know, now that the bill is on the street, oh, we're also joining my council member, Jwan, a pleasure to have you with us. You know, now that the bill is on the street, now there's gonna be, you know, people coming out of the woodwork, we hope, you know, to try to, on the government level, you know, the private sector, various entities that, you know, want to play a role here because this is a thing, this is happening. It was already gonna happen because of the federal mandate, you know, but now it's just, you know, creates more imperative to move forward. Let me finish with your statement, then I have some questions, and it is normally, just to my colleagues on the council, it is normally my way to ask very few questions upfront and to have council members jump in with their questions, I've done that every hearing, this is not one of those days, and so, I apologize for that, but there's a couple of things that I want to just, you know, nail down, and I thank my council, I thank my colleagues for their indulgence. Yeah, I'll just put in a plug on page four of your testimony for the home test kits. When we were raising our daughter, like, we tested the water every year, house is now ninety-nine years old, we have a lead service line, and, you know, we've never had any detectable levels of lead, but the only reason I know that is through these home test kits, so a little plug for people to use those, and to do the standard things, to run your water in the morning, to take stagnant water that's been sitting against the pipes all night, and, and I read with interest your quotation from the city health department, you know, we always want to affirm, you know, the overall safety of the water supply, and no less of an authority than the, you know, Department of Mental Health, you know, made that declaration that they've never, you know, detected a case of elevated lead level that was caused by drinking water in New York City. Some may dispute that or whatever, and that does not mean that this is not going to happen, or there's just no way to get out of this, and this is a good thing, but I just want to reaffirm people that the water is safe to drink, lest they go run out and buy bottled water, which has less than no lead in it, you know? And, and item three on page four of your statement, what is New York City already doing about lead service lines? To address lead service lines and private property, we have enacted rules to ensure that broken lines are replaced, have implemented programs to replace lines during water and sewer work, and have managed replacement programs using grant funding, and so, could you expand a little bit more on the grant funding that's used to do that?
So as I mentioned...
You probably already discussed it, but I'm...
Yeah, as I mentioned, so there were two sources of money, there was a small pot of money from the state in 2019, and now, now the twenty million in grants and twenty-eight million in loans that we have.
So that is that, okay.
The BIL.
And then the next page, page five, is all about how we don't get our fair share, and that is, you know, many people believe that there's gotta be a way to do this with no cost to homeowners. This should just happen. Cities should just raise water rates, the general fund should play a role, federal government, state government, city government, whatever, and that we can, you know, you covered this a little bit, but just kind of go over again how that is gonna be difficult in the extreme, if not impossible, and has other drawbacks to it.
Well, look, I think there are a couple of considerations here. The first is that as the data in the back of my testimony demonstrates, that lead service lines are pretty equally distributed across the housing stock, and so there are very expensive homes that have lead service lines, there are very, there are much lower-value homes that have lead service lines, and so I think one question is whether it makes sense to do a program that winds up replacing lead service lines for free in a three-million-dollar townhome or something like that, where it's a reasonable burden on a homeowner. I think there's a similar analogy to be made, there are lots of requirements that we impose on homeowners and landlords for safety, whether it's fire alarms or window guards or things like that. We don't go in and have the city impose or install window guards, we require the landowner or the landlord or the homeowner to do those things. And I think the final thing is the reality, the complexity of a service line replacement is not in the difficulty of doing the job or the paperwork, that's quite standard. Where complexity enters is where a homeowner has a patio that they really love, or the garden with the heritage rose bush that happens to sit right over the service line or whatever, and what we find is that in a centralized way, if you are trying to do the whole street at once with a centralized city contract, you really run afoul of people who want it done their own way. So I think some homeowners would probably much rather have their own contractor do it, probably at a lower price than the city could engage, due to the city's contracting rules, and therefore, that's why, while to make use of the BIL money, we're gonna follow those rules and maximize the amount of money that we are allowed access to, and we're gonna do that centralized approach in neighborhoods where it makes sense, but we don't necessarily believe that that one-size-fits-all, or we don't believe that one-size-fits-all, and that's not necessarily the answer for the whole city.
And on page six, you talk about the, your testimony indicates the two billion dollars that is needed. I will mention that, you know, this is nothing to do with you, it has to do with the administration, and this is a crusade, you know, I've been on for a long time. The Adams Administration, you're not gonna want to touch this with a ten-foot pole, so this is just from me, you guys can cover your ears. This year, the Adams Administration is diverting four hundred and forty million dollars in water and sewer funds through an arcane mechanism known as the water rental payment, whereby the mayor asks for, it's a complex formula, but the mayor is legally entitled to ask for, ask for rental payment, which was abandoned by the de Blasio administration as he saw it as righting or wrong, it certainly was wrong. Those of you, you know, you're fortunate, if you don't know the history of the rental payments, I'm on a drag into the saga, but once upon a time, the rental payment was a meaningful thing, it paid off pre-1985 debt, for, when the Water Board and the Water Finance Authority was created in 1985, there was a pile of pre-existing, you know, DEP, you know, general obligation capital debt, and they're created, and so going forward, there was gonna be self-financing that way, the debt that was already on the table was going to be paid down over the years through this rental payment concept, which was created, and that rental payment was equal to exactly the debt service on that pre-1985 DEP debt, and that was all good, and it's, that was, it was, and it worked just fine. But when the state did that law, they built a Trojan horse into it, such that the rental payment went from being the debt service in the pre-1985 debt to fifteen percent of the Water Finance Authority debt going forward, and so, you know, long story, which I've already made long, but shortening, is that, you know, the, so now the rental payment does not go to water and sewer, it doesn't pay off any DEP-related debt, doesn't go to DEP or water sewer at all, it's just, and hasn't been used since like 2016 and 2017, and Mayor Adams in his first budget didn't ask for rental payment, second budget didn't ask for rental payment, but now in this year, making up the 2025 budget, he's reaching back into FY24, which we're in right now, a hundred and fifty or so million dollars there, and almost three hundred, and it comes out to four hundred and forty million between, like, the reach back and the reach forward into the next fiscal year. So it's still four hundred and forty million dollars, that would be eleven points on the rate if the Water Board and the Water Finance Authority were paying this correctly, but now they're only, it's a mess. And then going forward, the mayor's declared in the executive budget that he's gonna be doing full rental payments as far as the eye can see, and that could mean eight, nine, ten points on the rate, just to finance the diversion of water and sewer money, people pay their water and sewer bill, and the mayor takes a whole chunk of change and puts it into the general fund. One point four billion dollars over the next four years, one point four billion. It costs two to do this, and so, this is why, you know, and why do they do it? You know, I worked at OMB, in the Capital Division in 1985, when this whole thing was created. We needed a new financing mechanism for funding DEP projects, and what was put in place the Water Board and the Water Finance Authority was a good one. The rental payment was a good thing, but sometimes good things go bad and are used for the wrong things, so I mean, DEP wants to build out the water and sewer infrastructure for, you know, the very severe storms, we want to pay for stuff like this, but the Adams Administration is taking four hundred and forty million dollars in water and sewer in this coming fiscal year. is taking $440 million in water and sewer in this coming fiscal year and putting that and is going to spend that money, and they're not even, they're borrowing from future years to do it, because if they pay for it, you know, pay as you go, it would be 11 points on the rate. It's not. It's like they're adding like three and a half points on the rate. That's not Ritt's problem. I mean, he didn't, you know, he didn't do this. He's the regulated entity, but, you know, the Water Board is a reg, and they're obligated to do this by state law, and because I yelled and screamed at them, I'm good at that. So the Water Board has, you know, passed unanimously a resolution that the mayor doing this going forward makes him a meanie. And so, I don't think they call him a meanie, but they, it was the way the Water Board would say it, but you get the idea. And so when we're talking about money to pay for stuff like this, this is what happens when, you know, budget directors see free money sitting on the table that we could ask for, that no one has asked for in years, but like, let's just ask for it just because we can, and no one's really going to understand. And so this is like a crusade of mine, and so back to our regularly scheduled programming. And so, and, right, we indicated that you're still working to understand that lead service line replacement is a water-eligible, this is a complex analysis. I certainly appreciate, you know, you and your folks doing that. That's, so we're now through the, we're now through my opening statement and Ritt's statement, now here are my actual questions. And in hearings going forward, I got to like get to my colleagues, you know, Bob, I'm good about this, but just today is just like one of these days. I have a few more questions, and then you can have at Ritt and his team all you want. Okay. Let me try to cut down, I think I've asked some of these already. Yeah, I already did that. Did that. Yeah, we sort of did that. I'm trying to conserve time. You talked about that in your statement, you answered that. Yeah, we talked about that. That wasn't so bad of my prepared questions. Looks like I asked the whole of them right. I surprise myself sometimes, you know? And, yeah, so thank you for your good testimony and your good answers. We have council members that want to ask questions. Anyone else come in since, okay? What, what's going on? Oh, okay. So he'd be the first, right? Okay, it's my pleasure to recognize my good friend, Councilmember Holden.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner, for your testimony. This has been a big problem in most council districts since you got the federal mandate. Can you, you know, expand on the federal mandate? What's the timetable? Did it give us any timetable to do this?
Well, the federal government is still finalizing the rules, so we're acting based on the proposed improvement to the lead and copper rule. But the general guidance from the federal government is that there needs to be a 10-year plan. There is, in what the EPA has proposed, a longer timeframe that would apply for New York City and other cities with large numbers. But again, you know, I think what we are trying to do is come up with an approach that is responsible but accelerated. So we endorse the idea that is reflected in the intro of looking at 10 years. It may take us a year or two to get this program underway, so we're...
So your DEP's taking an aggressive approach to this. It's actually, you could back off a little bit since they haven't finalized the mandate. So here's the problem that we're seeing, especially seniors. Now, I understand that people, you know, but again, what we're getting from DEP is a little heavy-handed, I think, because they're coming in, they're saying your water meter needs to be replaced, and they come and show up to the owner's home, and many times in my neighborhood, they're seniors. And yes, they might have equity in the home if they're the owners, obviously, but it triggers off a whole bunch of bureaucratic snafus here. Let me explain. So they, the EP comes in and says, "We're not going to install a water meter on your lead line." And most of the homes in my district are way over 60, 70 years. My own home is over 100.
So, Bob, if I could just jump in for a second. I got to touch base in the health committee upstairs. If you could act as chair until I return in a couple of minutes.
I get as much time as I want now? Okay, thank you. This is heaven. Well, yeah, I'll certainly do that. So, the EP then refuses to put the water meter in. They say, "You have to do it if it's a lead line, because we're not going to touch it." And then we called DEP, said, "Well, yeah, we don't touch lead lines because our people are not trained to deal with the lead line." They're plumbers, but they can't deal with a lead line, which is strange, but they're probably told that they can't touch the lead line. So why not, if I could hire my own plumber to replace that lead line, at least for now, and then if, when all these new programs come in, possibly in two or three years, maybe they'll get some help in paying for the full lead line replacement, let's say. So that's what I'm hearing, that's possible, right? That we're looking at maybe financing this down the road, but we haven't yet. So why would I want to replace it? And it's going to cost many times 10 to, like you said, $10,000 to $15,000 to replace this. So they'd probably have to get, you know, a loan, a home equity loan. So now you're, so you see what's going on, just to replace a water meter. So I, you know, let's say in my own home, let's say I had a lead line, I don't even know if I do, I'm going to check when I get home, but if, and I probably do, but if there's a space where I could put just the copper line, let's say, just around the water meter, why couldn't I do that and get DEP to do, to install the meter?
So, Councilmember, it has, there has been a practice elsewhere in the country, something we have not done, of partial replacements, and I think across the industry, there is a recognition that that is just a bad idea. The rule is less about we're not trained to touch lead, but the problem is, as I mentioned, our first line of defense against lead leaching into the water is this lining, right, that the orthophosphates create. If you disturb the line, you can disturb that coating, right? And which is why we have this, and it's why we consider it an appropriate thing to embrace now that when, if DDC or DEP are changing the water mains, which inevitably means you touch that service line, if it's lead, we're going to replace the whole thing at our cost because we've caused a disturbance that might take a situation where as Councilmember Gennaro was saying in his own home, he's had a lead service line, he's done the testing, he's been in that 90% of homes that has had no detectable or very low levels of lead despite having a lead service line because the orthophosphates are working and protecting his family from leaching lead. But if you disturb it, which could be right at the point where the service line connects the meter, you can undo all that work. That's why we have that new rule. Not new, actually, that rule dating back to 2009.
Now, on, so let's say that the homeowner installs their own, or they get, they hire a plumber to get their, to install the water meter. Is there a full 100%, reimbursement on just the water meter installation from DEP?
I would have to get back to you on that.
Well, that's important, because if you can get back to me, because I have a lot of homeowners who are stuck between a rock and a hard place. You know, they, I recommend, because I did speak to Mario in DEP, and he said same thing you're saying, that it's their home, they should make the improvements, they own it, but we're talking now, we're not talking just window guards or, you know, smoke, you know, smoke alarm, we're talking about major investment now that will disrupt everyone. So especially when down the road, there might be programs, but you mentioned that there's low-income neighborhoods, so I would assume mine's not included in that, but what about people who are low-income within my middle-class neighborhood, and again, like I said, mostly seniors? Is there a program for that, for them?
There is not at the moment, but as I said, it's something we've certainly been working on over the last year or so, and it's exactly what this bill would require us to do, is, as I mentioned, I think we'd like a little more flexibility to do our work and happy to come back to the council with what we would recommend in terms of a program for that. But again, it is important, what we are about to embark on, which I hope will start up before the end of this year, is a highly targeted program that is driven by the requirements set by the federal government and by the state to use this bipartisan infrastructure law money. And so we have been aggressively, as you know, across the board, we have been trying to grab every federal dollar we can on any topic, and so we have tailored a couple of projects so we can get our full allowance of that money. That requires a targeted program, and there's a map in my testimony of where we got funded. It's, the first year, we got two neighborhoods in the Bronx, and this year, we got one neighborhood in the Bronx and one neighborhood in Northern Queens, looks to be flushing. And those were done really tightly on census tracts that had low income and high concentrations of lead service lines. So we do not, I guess to get back to your question, we do not have a program for a low-income homeowner in a middle-income neighborhood.
Right, so you see, so you see why they're resisting, at least, you know, in my office, we're trying to come up with answers, but we get nowhere many times.
Well, look, as I say...
And then, but here's the problem, Commissioner, that now DEP is threatening to fine the homeowners for not replacing their meter, that they feel it's too old, but you see, we had that thrust upon us 35 years ago when the water meters were installed. We didn't choose to do that, the city decided, and they came in and they installed one on my lead line, I guess, right? And that was okay then, not anymore. So when rules change, and then people get hit with $10,000, $15,000, and many are just on social, living on social security, now they got to get loans, and that's where I, that's why I think if we tell them, "Just wait a while," but then they get fined, which I think DEP's putting a little too much pressure. They should give them some leeway because, you know, give them a time period, maybe a couple of years, say, "All right, in a couple of years, you're going to have to do this." Here's another thing I think we could try, and I just want to bounce this off you. If we say, let's say somebody's selling an older home, and it has a lead line, why not require, I mean, that would have to be a law from the city council, but what would you feel about a law that required the person selling the home to replace the, you know, lead line?
I believe that's in the intro being heard today, and we fully endorse that idea.
Yeah, because that would make sense, that would actually take the pressure off the person, and when they sell a home, I assume they're making a profit. I mean, you have to assume they're making a profit, and that could be then fixed, and you're not talking about huge money, at least in that regard.
Right, but Councilmember, if I may, I think there's a conflation of two things, and more than happy to work with you on this. One is when something triggers work on the meter, right, because the meter is old or I hear what you're saying, and we will look into that. That is different from replacing a lead service line as part of an overarching program or because there is an actual finding that there's lead in the water in that home.
Right, but see, I use, I have a few filters on my line, anticipating that it's a lead line and that lead is getting through. So the effectiveness of filters seems to be pretty good, right? I mean, in reducing the lead. So that's why I don't think it's that urgent for some homeowners, when they put the lead line, you know, they put the filters in, everything is working fine, they don't have any leaks, and I have the American Water Insurance, and it would be an additional cost if I, you know, because even I've gotten some advice, and I don't want to say who it's from in DEP, it's, "Wait till it breaks before you," you know, because then you're covered, right? So that's why people are, and that's what homeowners are understanding, that maybe they should wait. But anyway, back to you, Chair, I think, since you're back. I know you had a bunch of other questions, so...
Bob, thank you for...
No, I like the extra time, I'll do this anytime soon.
It's great to have you. Yes, we're also joined by Councilmember, Councilmembers Marmarado and Wrestler. Very pleased to have them here today, and the next Councilmember signed up for questions. I recognize Councilmember Shuang, and if the other Councilmembers want to sign up, just let the council committee know, but you are recognized, Councilmember Shuang, for questions. Did she ask for questions?
Thank you, thank you, Chair, and also thank Commissioner for the testimony. I have some concerns similar to my colleague, Councilmember Holden's. My district has probably majority homeowners, and a lot of them even doesn't know there's lead in the water. And also, for me, I'm a mother of two young kids, I understand it's very important to test the water. If I did not see that blow, I probably even never thought about it. It's a good idea, but how do we implement? And also, in my district, a lot of people, they own the property, but they're senior, they don't have the money, and also the resources or anyone to help them to do that. Does DEP have the support system there? And also, as you said before, in the low-income area, you guys have support, how about middle-income working families?
Councilmember, thank you. You know, as I said, and as, so we have been working on a set of concepts for what a, an effective but responsible financial assistance program might look like. As you see here, the numbers are quite large, right? And so I'll, to put it in perspective, if we were to fund a 10-year replacement, $2 billion, if it were eligible for the water rate, we would have to increase the water rate by another 5%, right, across the entire city. That impacts a lot of working-class homeowners and a lot of people who live in rental apartment buildings who would get no benefit from it. So I think one of the things we are trying to balance is how much do you place this burden on everyone across the city, knowing that you will also be impacting a lot of low-income people, or do you concentrate the benefit on those who own the properties? Again, we don't have more programs in place right now than I have outlined in the testimony, where a line breaks, where we're doing a replacement in the street, or the state and federal-funded programs. But we are working on a set of concepts. Intro 942 includes one approach. Again, we would love to have a bit more flexibility so that we can tailor perhaps a package of support, might include some loans, might include grants, might include some direct replacements. And again, part of the reason we want to do that is to be able to maximize our eligibility for any future state and federal funding that might be available. So I recognize that we don't have an answer for you right now. That's exactly what this bill is in part trying to address, and we have been working very much to get there as well.
Okay, and also, do we have the other ultimate method? Maybe you have a filter, a lot of family, I know my in-laws' house, they have a filter under the sink to filter all the drinking water. Is that able to reduce that issue? Because if it's a shower water, no one cares, bathroom water, no one cares, only the drinking water. Is that correct?
Yes, generally speaking, yes. I mean, lead in water has to be ingested to have a real problem from it. But I guess, you know, as I said in my testimony, the drinking water testing kits are available to any New Yorker, you call 311, it'll arrive in the mail, it's really quite straightforward to do the test. If lead's, if lead is found in your water, then we will be following up with specific advice around filters and things like that. It is not clear to me, I don't have a filter at home, it is not... it is not clear to me that New York City's drinking water needs to be filtered as a general rule. Only if a particular building, for some reason, either because of its service line or because of its plumbing, has a problem, does filtration make sense.
But if we do the filter at home, will that be cheaper?
It is possible, however, filters do need maintenance and replacements. So over the long timeframe that a service line can stay in place, I don't know the cost-benefit analysis. Maybe you do offhand, Paul or Janet. But I would imagine that that is suboptimal as a permanent fix.
And also, you said that every house can do whatever they want. Like, say, if I live in a street, my neighbor did it yesterday. One month later, the other side of the neighbor going to do, change the pipe. So every day, my street will have someone digging there. Will be that's the case?
It could be, and again, one of the things that we are looking into is whether there are opt-in kind of geographic concentrated, geographically concentrated programs, so you get some of that done. It was something that, you know, and Councilmember Gennaro and I worked together on the Clean Heat Program years ago, right, where we did opt-in neighborhood-level planning to convert buildings off of dirty heating oil, right? And so that was coordinated geographically, but it didn't rely on a city grant program or city contractors to do the work. So there are a number of different models that we can explore. Again, I believe the answer we will find is that there is not a one-size-fits-all solution that really optimizes for New York City. But I totally recognize the disruption that you point out. I will say, though, over the course of a 10-year phase-in, it's unlikely that it would be one day to the next. So that might be an extreme case, what you've just posited, but it is plausible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member. I happily recognize Councilmember Marmarado for questions.
Thank you, Chair.
Followed by Councilman Wrestler.
Hi, how are you today? Thank you, and I apologize for coming late. I was in another committee, so if I have some repetitive questions, just bear with me. How do you know if you have a lead line?
So we have a website, so we have a website. You can go to the DEP homepage, and you can get to the website. You can enter your address, and it will tell you. DEP identifies this in a couple of ways. First of all, we know many buildings, in fact, probably most buildings in New York City, were never even eligible for a lead service line, because even when lead was widely used, it was really only used for one-to-four-family homes, not for an apartment building. So if you have an apartment building, there's basically no chance you have a lead service line. We then look at the tap cards. So DEP has a record of every connection to the New York City water system. So Councilmember Gennaro's house, Councilmember Holden's house, I don't know if you live in a single-family home or not, we will have a tap card that records everything that's been done relevant to connecting that address to the water main, which includes when the service line was put in, whether or when it was replaced, and in most cases, what the material was, right? And so we can determine, if we know, for example, that the service line was replaced with galvanized steel in 1980, we know it's definitely not lead, because we've got a record. We may see a home, and this is where we have the $130,000, that either it says it was lead, or it was a one-to-four-family home where the last change to the lead service line was before 1961. We assume that is lead. And then there is this bucket of unknowns, where we have 200,000, where the records are incomplete, or for whatever reason, we can't be sure. We have now, over the last several years, sampled 30,000 of what had been 230,000 unknowns. Of the sample, 10% turned out to be lead, which is why we are using the estimate that of the 200,000, 20,000 are. So again, you can go to a website, you can look it up for yourself, and if you do have a lead service line, then we would encourage you to call 311 and get one of these testing kits.
Okay, so you do provide testing kits?
Yes, so we have, I'm sorry, yeah, so that's, but it's important. The lead testing kit will not necessarily tell you if you have a lead service line. It will tell you whether there is lead in the water. If you have lead in the water-
Well, I was gonna panic once I went home and checked if I had it, and if I had it, you know.
I would still wait, because as we were talking about a moment ago, and Councilmember Gennaro volunteered his own history, even a home with a lead service line, because of the orthophosphates that we put into the water, there is a reasonable chance that you are quite well protected, right? Which is why 90% of the homes that we test, virtually all of which have lead service lines, do not have elevated levels of lead, right? Because that barrier is doing a good job.
Now, I know you had mentioned neighborhoods in the Bronx. It doesn't look like any of those were mine, right? Because I see on this diagram that we have the portion of my district could possibly be in my district, because I don't have my glasses with me. Looks like a zero.
Yes, so this, you know, the zero that's there is because that was one of the neighborhoods that was cut by the state's arbitrary cap. So the way to interpret this map on page five in the, I think that's green, we had put forward in 2022, those were our 2022 applications, five neighborhoods, no, I'm sorry, six neighborhoods, one in Queens, five in the Bronx. We actually scored, under the state's published scoring, all of our proposals scored at the high end of the proposals they received. So had they stuck by their standards, we would have gotten all of those neighborhoods funded, either through grants or loans. We had requested a 50-50 split, because the pot of money is half grants, half loans. Frankly, realizing how well New York City scored, they then decided they were going to impose a rule that no municipality could get more than 25% of the money. And so, yes, it does look like part of your district lost out because of the state's rule. That is precisely, you know, as a general practice, the administration doesn't weigh in on resolutions. But I will say, I have been saying the same thing as expressed in this resolution for quite a while. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member. And as we discussed earlier in the hearing, I mean, the whole idea is to, you know, put some clay on the wheel, work out various funding mechanisms. You know, there's analysis going on in DEP, but I didn't want to wait. We need to go forward, we need to do this, and then we will work collaboratively to develop the best financing mechanisms that are legal, fair, fundable, you know. This is a huge undertaking, and we need all hands on deck to make sure it's financed properly. And I thank Ritt and his team, and everyone here who will yell at the state to be more fair to the city. Thank you very much for that. And now, it's my pleasure to recognize Councilmember Wrestler for questions.
Thank you very much, Chair. I cannot say enough that I think we are very fortunate to have you leading this committee. And I, we don't agree 100% of the time, close, not 100. But I think you've done just a phenomenal job leading this committee. I've learned a lot from you, and I really appreciate it. And I want to wish our commissioner a very happy birthday. So, oh, we got one round of applause. There you go. Where was the DEP staff? Come on. No, I know that this is a controversial hearing, and that there are a lot of feelings on different sides of this issue. And so I really just appreciate the opportunity to have the conversation, to learn and to dig in a little bit. And like Councilmember Marmarado, I unfortunately have been in three hearings this morning, so I will be carefully reading the transcript afterward. But I did want to ask a few questions. Firstly, setting aside the issue of ownership, you know, of whether this should be the city's responsibility or private homeowner's responsibility, wouldn't it be in the interest of the city for lead pipelines to be replaced in an organized fashion by reputable contractors that we're confident are gonna do this work correctly, diligently, appropriately, rather than ad hoc efforts that an individual homeowner might undertake? Do you worry about quality control if the city were not responsible?
I will say, council member, I don't really worry about quality control. The entire way we regulate all of our buildings relies on licensed contractors and experts to do their job, to submit their paperwork, et cetera. Replacing a service line is not a particularly complex thing. I couldn't do it, I'm not a plumber. But it is not a particularly intricate task. And frankly, since a lead service line is not really even available, it's not like somebody's gonna replace it with a lead service line and falsify the documents. That would, of course, be a career-ending and potentially criminal thing for somebody to do. So I think the general, and as I mentioned, we already have, whether it's through the insurance product that is our partner, Oncourse, or through others, there are 1,500 lead service lines being replaced by independent contractors every year. So I'm not convinced that you have to have a central contract in order to maintain quality.
One of the concerns that we've heard from advocates is that this policy or this legislation could actually have a negative impact on our ability to secure state and federal funds. By shrinking the city's responsibility, we would be eligible for less federal support to actually address this issue. Do you think that's an accurate critique, inaccurate critique?
I have, I cannot help but think it's a completely inaccurate critique. I see no evidence that we would be precluded by anything that's in this law from developing programs that would make use. And it's one of the things I appreciate about the intro, that by providing kind of a general requirement-
Ritt, I'm sorry, I just kind of like missed that. I was having a conversation with staff, and could I just have the setup to what you're replying to now?
No, so I asked, could there be a potential negative impact on our eligibility for state or especially federal funding by shrinking our liability and making this the responsibility of homeowners? Are there federal funds that we might lose out on as a result?
Okay, got it, got it.
And the commissioner was saying-
No, no, no. I just wanted to catch up.
And, you know, my answer to that question is, I certainly see no evidence that that's the case. So I think it's inaccurate to say that. I think one of the things that Intro 492 does is it sets kind of a backstop, it sets a general requirement. But it doesn't preclude us from doing other programs. And as I said, you know, both the 2019 means-tested but non-geographically-specific program that was funded by the state and the geographically-concentrated central program that is funded by the bipartisan infrastructure law, I see no reason that either of those is incompatible in a world in which Intro 942 has become law. So we would still be able to put forward, and we certainly would be putting forward programs, to grab as much federal money as we possibly can. But as I also said earlier, one of the things we currently lack is that fundamental mandate that makes it the homeowner's responsibility. That encourages people to take advantage of programs, because what we have seen is we go to people, particularly in that 2019 pilot we did. We say, "Hey, we'll give you a free service line," and somebody says, "Well, I'm not home that week. I really don't want the hassle. I just put in a new azalea bed. No, please don't disturb the stuff in front of me," and they don't do it, right? And so they pass up on our ability to do something for them. So that's one of the healthy things that 942 would do.
That's interesting. Is that okay? Just another question or two? One, I'll do one. We got a full house here. And forgive me if I missed this in others questioning, but have you been able to evaluate an average cost for a one-to-four-family home for replacing lead service lines?
Yeah, the number that we use for a central program is probably $15,000. It ranges from 10 to 15 if a homeowner does it on their own. And, you know, and again, there are some economies of scale. Certainly, the city contractor, we learned a lot in 2019 that there are economies of scale if you do an entire street at once. However, that is counterbalanced by the fact that city contracting is always at a premium, whereas the private contractors that homeowners can get on their own will almost always be cheaper than a city contract.
And if the city were to develop a program where we paid for low and moderate-income homeowners and covered those costs explicitly, and shifted liability to homeowners of greater means, we'd still be ultimately reducing the total cost to taxpayers to address this issue if something along those lines were developed.
Yes, well, and that is the kind of package or portfolio that I think is contemplated in Intro 942. I said in my testimony, we'd probably seek a bit more flexibility so that we could develop a program. And again, I'm sure there's a way to do that in partnership or with appropriate oversight. But I think there's an opportunity for a portfolio approach here, right? There are some neighborhoods where there are very high concentrations of both poverty and lead service lines. That probably lends itself to that kind of centralized approach. There are other neighborhoods where they're much more diffuse, right? You might only have a couple of lead service lines on the block. The centralized approach may not be the most cost-effective. And then, as, you know, as Councilmember Holden was pointing out, you're gonna have some neighborhoods where it could be a medium-income or a high-income neighborhood, and you've got a couple of people on the block who are, in fact, low-income, right? And we've got to have the flexibility to tailor a program to all of those circumstances.
We've all seen there are many New Yorkers today who are house-rich and cash-poor. And additional expenses, even, you know, can be really deeply challenging and even force people out of their homes. So we want to avoid that wherever feasible. I really, you know, I know that there's a lot of concern from environmental justice advocates who I have a lot of respect for, I know the chair has a lot of respect for, I know the commissioner has a lot of respect for. I am looking forward to their feedback today and hearing from them as well. And I think this is a healthy conversation for us to be having, so I just appreciate the hearing and appreciate the opportunity to learn a bit more about the issue. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Wrestler. And as I said earlier, before, you know, everyone's running around going to different hearings, me included. You know, like the commissioner said, and this is not our first interaction on this bill. And, you know, many things are still being researched from the administration's end, and, you know, the availability of, you know, whether water and sewer funding, you know, general fund funding, how all that works legally, making sure we get... Are you on your phone while I'm talking to you?
I'm listening.
Okay.
I'm taking notes.
Yeah, and so, you know, the idea of 942 is just planting the flag and, you know, opening up the collaboration, you know, with the administration to get the right amount of flexibility, the right amount of funding, you know, to do, you know, to make the best of a very challenging set of circumstances. And so, this is the game plan. And so, thank you very much, appreciate that. So with that, I want to thank the panel. Wish you a very happy birthday for the rest of the day. And this is your birthday week, too, so I don't limit my, you know, calorie intake on my birthday to just one day. And if you can leave behind a, you know, senior staff member who can get the benefit of the good testimony that we're gonna hear, that would be really great. I appreciate that very much.
We have people back at the office watching on TV. Don't worry.
Okay. Well, thanks very much. Look forward, Paul, good to see you. Just hang on. Janet, Janet, okay. Thank you very much. And Paul, good to see you. It's been a long time. And so, yep. Okay, this is the start of the next, my counsel just handed this to me. I gotta read this whole thing? Okay. "I will now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is like a new thing the council does. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding, and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record." There's also a mechanism of people sending in their testimony, right? Is that in here? Okay. "If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topics: lead service lines, Intro 1984, and Reso 8. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council, C-O-U-N-C-I-L." also email written testimony to testimony@council, C-O-U-N-C-I-L, testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted." Do I have to do this? No?
No.
Okay. And so, oh, I want to recognize Councilmember Salamanca. It's a pleasure, always a pleasure to see you and be with you. What are we going to do? What are we doing here? Oh, we're going to... So the first panel is... What do you think that is?
Sierra.
Sierra Scott of the National Clean Water Collective. I can't, I can't read that, say that. Fabiana Castillo from Earth Justice and Valerie Barron from NRDC.
Is it ready now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming to testify. Why don't we do it from my left to my right, starting at this side, going that way? So please proceed with your testimony. If you have written testimony, certainly you can give that to the sergeants, but please proceed. Every witness, each witness has two minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, counsel, for bringing the critical legislation to the forefront. It's so great to see some colleagues that probably don't know me, but I know about the report that they actually, that came out last year.
I also should have said to please state your name for the record.
Oh, sure thing. My name is Sierra Scott of the National Clean Water Collective, and you pronounced that right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
A recent report came out that one in five New Yorkers may be drinking water from lead pipes. That's about 21% of New Yorkers. And this is a serious concern, given that New York's aging infrastructures is encouraging us to see this issue addressed. However, I'm concerned about the 10-year timeframe that the resolution talks about for property owners to replace lead pipes. What happens to residents that are currently experiencing discolored water, toxic water, I've spoken to some folks in NITSHA and also other places across New York City, not just in low-income communities. And a 10-year wait can be a lifetime for those struggling with these issues. If you don't have income to pay for bottled water, which is not the best answer either, because it's an environmental, it makes a terrible environmental impact. And so, Councilwoman, I'm a little nervous, my first time, guys. Councilwoman Zwang, she asks a question about whether or not folks should be concerned about taking showers. Lead can enter the body through both ingestion and absorption through the skin. The skin is our largest organ, and when our pores open up, contaminants can easily penetrate. This is especially concerning for residents taking showers as they may be inhaling lead particles along with water vapor. This tragic experience also happened in Flint, Michigan. It highlights the danger as residents who showered were exposed to both Legionella and lead. I urge the city to consider immediate relief measures for impacted residents. If I can just finish, this includes testing, as you mentioned, but also water filtration systems, like point-of-use, point-of-entry, and temporary alternatives, other sort of... I'll stop there, but what I say is that it's important for folks to know what's in their water first before they get the filtration systems. But I think that should be a step that we should take before that 10 years is over. I mean, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. And when this panel steps down, Josh, you should put yourself in a situation where you can, I want you to, you know, I haven't seen this, this very nice person testify before, we certainly want to have her, you know, information and keep, you know, and keep the conversation going. Josh is my legislative director. Raise your hand, Josh, if anyone knows who he is. And so, when this panel, so make sure you get her information. Thank you very much for your testimony, appreciate it. You bet. Please commence.
Chairman General, members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Valerie Barron, and I'm a senior attorney and the national policy director for the drinking water team at NRDC. At NRDC, I look across the country and keep track of the best and worst-in-class drinking water policies. I'm sorry to say that while I very much applaud the intent of this legislation to get the pipes out and prevent lead exposure, this approach would codify some of the worst policy in the country, and we have seen from other places that have tried this, it simply would not work. We need a fresh start, and as advocates, we're here to help create a fresh start. Across the country, the best programs that get the lead out safely and equitably have several things in common. They take a wholesale approach, coordinating the work throughout the jurisdiction. There is no cost to property owners. When the owner shoulder the cost, the results are highly inequitable. They require copper, the safest material. This bill does none of those things. Also troubling is how the bill could cost, contrary to what we've heard, New York access to the largest pot of federal funding ever allocated for lead pipe replacement. In its current form, a regulatory proposal at EPA is being finalized, and it would allow utilities to evade liability when private property owners are solely responsible for the pipes. New York State, like most states, prioritizes distributing its federal dollars, including the infrastructure laws' funds, to utilities that need those dollars to come into compliance with federal law. I would be happy to speak to this more in questions. If you'll allow a mixed metaphor here, this approach passes the buck to property owners and then picks the pocket of ordinary New Yorkers at the same time. Many of the pipes are in place because they were required. We heard about historic codes earlier, and the very first report of the Queens Water Company in 1898 notes that, quote, "Service pipe must be of extra-strong AA lead pipe," end quote. No lead pipes were installed after 1961. Leaving property owners to fend for themselves is inefficient, and it's unfair to today's New York City residents who did not create this problem. We really are here to help craft an approach that will work and that will be equitable and get the lead out of drinking water for all New Yorkers.
Thank you, and I look forward to that colloquy. I've always enjoyed my relationship with the NRDC. I really appreciate your testimony here today. Thank you. Oh, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Holden has a question.
I can wait until the whole panel...
Sure, okay, we'll do that.
Good morning. My name is Fabiana Castillo, and I'm a senior litigation assistant in Earth Justice's New York office. As I'm sure others will testify today, this bill is the wrong approach for any city that both wants its lead service lines replaced and wants to narrow rather than broaden health disparities between different neighborhoods. But I would like to explain why this approach is exponentially wrong for New York City in particular. 69% of New Yorkers are renters, more than double the national average. Yet, Intro 942 entrusts landlords to decide whether their tenants should remain exposed to the biggest source of lead in drinking water. Intro 92 presents two options: replace lead service lines or pay a one-time $1,000 fee. Nothing is currently stopping landlords from replacing lead pipes if they were so inclined. But let's say landlords choose the first option under Intro 942, replacing lead service lines at their properties. Those landlords would most likely then pass that cost on to their tenants, deepening the historic affordable housing crisis in the city. And even though the bill does not guarantee financial assistance to anyone for replacing lead service lines, under no circumstance would it provide such assistance to the tenants of landlords replacing lead service lines. But those tenants would most likely be paying for the cost of replacement through increased rent. And again, the vast majority of New Yorkers are renters. But it is very likely that landlords will choose the second option under the bill, that is, they will not replace lead pipes. They would likely take the chance of a $1,000 fine, which would just be the cost of doing business, to avoid arranging for the pipe replacement, fronting the money, raising rents, managing complaints from tenants about raised rents, and risking vacancy from higher rents. Transferring the obligation to tackle a public health threat, a core responsibility of government, to the direction of landlords for the vast majority of New Yorkers is not a strategy that the city council should stand behind. Indeed, it is mind-boggling that such an approach even made its way into proposed legislation. We just urge the council to withdraw Intro 942 and develop a bill that builds on successful experiences for other cities, is workable, and will result in actual and equitable replacement of lead service lines for all. Thank you.
I recognize Councilmember Holden for questioning.
Yes, thank you. Valerie, you said that these pipes, these lead pipes, were required because they were, were they more durable? I guess, and I don't know if you can answer that, but...
I can. I can't speak to whether all of the pipes were required. We're still completing our historic research. But throughout the country, we see that they were required, and we do have records from Queens and from Staten Island that in the early days of the water system, they were required for hookup. They're likely still in the ground because they are extremely durable.
Right. So that's why my 100-year-old house hasn't, the pipe, you know, I bought the house in '79, 1979, and the inspector said, well, you know, you might have to replace that pipe because it's old already. And this was 1979, it still hasn't, you know, didn't break. But I felt that the commissioner, in his testimony, was interpreting the federal mandate like he was very aggressive. Like, because we have a lot of homeowners in my district that had to replace their water meters, and they, by the way, DEP installed it in lead. They had no problem in 1980-something, whatever it was, when they were installing it. But now they have this federal mandate, but they're jumping the gun. Before the feds have a chance to come up with a program, we're passing it on to the homeowners, the cost of not only replacing the lead line, but even the water meter. And then if you don't replace the water meter and the lead line, you're fined. And they're fining them, I guess it's $1,000, whatever they said they were going to... So I just felt, and I said to the commissioner today, what do you think about just waiting until we can get all these programs set up and not, you know, really punish the homeowner? Because I have a lot of seniors. And again, they're hit with so many, you know, they get, the sidewalk obviously is broken, the tree breaks their sidewalk, it does this to that, you know, every day there's something else that homeowners are getting hit with. So I agree with you. I think maybe we should look at a federal program and wait?
Sure, thank you.
I'm just going to speak to that first before we get an opportunity to do so. First of all, Councilmember Holden, when you're talking about the commissioner, I mean, it's our bill, it's my bill. So when you talk about these mandates, it's me.
I wasn't talking about your bill.
Yeah.
I'm talking about what DEP is currently doing to homeowners, about water meters, about replacement.
Oh, well, okay.
You know, so, but the line is one thing, you know, and I get it, we do have to replace the line. But I got off the bill for a reason, because I think they're just, what homeowners are just getting hit with, I'm trying to protect my, you know, I originally got on the bill, but then I started to get tons of flood of complaints by the interpretation of DEP with the federal mandate. And that's what I'm addressing. But that's what I'm addressing. But I'd like to hear, you were following up, Valerie?
Well, I'm the chairman, I'm going to assert my... We are not in a position, notwithstanding the fact that the federal mandate is still being finalized, and notwithstanding the fact that, you know, DEP is still figuring out which funds could potentially be eligible, the feds are coming down hard in that the, in that the lead service lines have to go. And this bill is a starting point. A lot of people think like we're going to vote it out tomorrow, like we're not. There's a lot of colloquy and, you know, interaction. This is the first hearing on the bill, and it's going to be a lot more, you know, colloquy to figure out how we can do this in the best way.
Chair, you said that the feds are coming down hard. How are they coming down hard?
Well, and that every lead line is going to be out, I mean, like, once the, you know, once the lead and copper rule is promulgated, every lead service line has got to be gone in 10 years.
Right.
There's no way out of that.
But what I'm saying is that the DEP is interpreting very aggressively, putting it on the homeowners, like Valerie said, which I think maybe we could wait for a program. You said that it was, it's probably the largest federal program, Valerie, in the nation?
Yeah, why don't you, you know, interact with Valerie and have her answer your question or whatever.
Well, I want it on the record of what she's saying.
Yeah, sure, of course, yeah, put it on the record.
All right.
So, I'm done. Valerie, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me. I can speak to this and try to tease out some of these things. And I think what we're hitting on here is exactly why this would be so confusing, to leave up to hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers to navigate on their own. This is a conversation amongst experts and folks that can professionally navigate complex regulatory systems, and it still takes this dialogue and back and forth. It would be a huge mistake to leave that up to individuals. First and foremost, if you think you're hearing from your seniors now, just wait until they get hit with bills from unscrupulous contractors. We have seen in other jurisdictions that have lead programs where the homeowner has to arrange for the work themselves, that most of the plumbers out there are great, but there are, like every profession, there are a few people that are not going to do the right thing. And when you have a senior calling you that's hit with a bill five times as high as it needs to be, that's the kind of thing that we're trying to prevent here. Two is that I actually don't think it's too early for a mandate. I appreciate what you're saying about waiting for a federal program, and regulatory certainty is always a concept that comes up in our work. However, we know that the pipes do need to come out, and we know that a mandate has been a central tenet of successful programs. The problem is, it doesn't stand on its own. It's like part of a stool. You need the mandate coupled with the public education and coordination of the work and the public funding. Public funding is not something I'm going to sit here and pretend is easy. How often is lawmakers, are you saying, you know what would be great? Let's do a big infrastructure project. It'll be easy, and everyone's going to agree from the get-go. We all know that's not how it works. But with the bipartisan infrastructure law funding, that is $15 billion for lead pipe replacement, we're halfway through the cycle now. I don't want to see New York City miss out on that opportunity. And another place where we agree with the chairman is that New York City has not gotten its fair share, and that is something that we're going to have to work on. What I want to parse a little bit for you now, if you'll allow me just another moment, is why I'm concerned about this program and the federal funds, because it is a multi-step nuanced thing, but it has a very real impact on the number of dollars that New York City gets. The state report, the state and cities report to EPA how many lead pipes there are. New York City has reported roughly one in five of the lead pipes that the state has reported. EPA then awards funds to the state based on the amount of lead that's present in New York City. The state then gets to decide where it goes. So one in five dollars that are coming in through the specific lead fund, which is not the only one, but it's highly relevant here, are coming in because of the lead in your districts. New York State, like most states, has a formula that they use. And they award the dollars based on that formula to localities and utilities based on what is needed to come into compliance with federal regulations. Of course, they could change that. All of these things could change. The law that you all are writing could change. But the way that things stand right now, and it is a common practice, is that the points that are awarded, and it's the first thing listed in what's called the Intended Use Plan for New York State, and I'm happy to go through it with you and your staff, the top thing is dollars that are needed for compliance with federal regulations, called an MCL or a treatment technique, maximum contaminant level or a treatment technique. The lead and copper rule improvements will be a new treatment technique for lead, and if DEP and the city successfully evade responsibility under the regulation, you will also lose those points towards the formula to award the funds that were given to New York State based on the lead in your districts. That money then will not come back to the districts. And that is the concern that I wanted to air out today.
No, thank you for that. Thanks so much.
Thank you. This panel is... Thank you for testifying. The next panel is Suzanne Novak from Earth Justice, Marissa Lieberman-Klein from Earth Justice, and Josh Kleinberg from NYLCV. Like we did in last panel, we'll start from my left to the right. So, yeah, closest to us, farthest away. Please commence with your testimony. Please commence with your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Suzanne Novak. I'm a senior attorney at Earth Justice's New York office, located just a few blocks from here. Earth Justice is a member of the New York City Coalition to End Lead Poisoning, and a core focus of my work is advocacy concerning lead in drinking water at the federal, New York State, and New York City level. I wanted to start off with saying that lead exposure comes from many sources: soil, paint, water, air. But we know that it's dangerous even in very small amounts. Thus, any exposure pathway must be ameliorated. Also, EPA modeling has shown that water can constitute 10% to 80% of U.S. children's lead exposures, with the highest levels for formula-fed infants less than a year old. And while New York City may not determine lead poisoning is from lead in drinking water for certain children, water is often not considered or looked at when a child presents with lead poisoning. And again, there's usually no one source. I also want to clarify that the federal lead action level is not and never has been health-based. EPA does not claim otherwise. In fact, the Federal Office of Inspector General has criticized the lead and copper rule for creating confusion regarding whether the action level is health-based, like it seems to have done maybe here this morning. And the same with the FDA allowing 5 parts per billion in bottled water. That is not health-based. There is no safe level of drinking water. Flint and Newark were not isolated events. There are lead in drinking water in high levels all over the country. The lead and copper rule requires one-time testing of 100 sites in a city of 9 million people. It's not exact science at all, and 11 parts per billion, what the commissioner said, is that they would surpass, is obviously a lot more than zero. So, we do have an issue on our hands to deal with. And although New York City, like other large water systems, uses corrosion control treatment to reduce lead levels, even the best corrosion-controlled treatments can't reduce lead levels because there are various use patterns, particles flake, there are physical disturbance—
Time expired.
I just—I just want to end with—
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Marissa Lieberman-Klein, and I'm an associate attorney at Earth Justice, as well as a member of the New York City Coalition to End Lead Poisoning. Intro 942's approach to lead service line replacement is so broken that it can't be fixed, and we need an entirely different approach, one that we know works. We know from other cities that full lead service line replacement works only when the municipality or water system replaces the lines at no direct cost to property owners. When Washington, D.C. required property owners to pay to replace lead service lines, wealthier white areas of the city replaced their lines, whereas lower-wealth, black-and-brown areas did not. Black and Latinx communities already experience higher rates of elevated blood lead levels in children, and D.C.'s approach of making lead service lines a private issue only exacerbated these disparities. By contrast, cities like Newark and Denver either have replaced or are replacing all of their lead service lines at no cost to property owners, and they are not seeing these disparities. It's clear that these cities took the right approach and are replacing lead service lines in an equitable, systemic, and efficient manner. By contrast, Intro 942's approach of having property owners pay is no different than the status quo, which we already know is not resulting in lead service line replacement. Having property owners pay is particularly unfair because lead service lines were banned in New York City in 1961, meaning, as others have said, that these are a legacy pollution issue that current property owners didn't install and didn't ask for. I ask you to withdraw Intro 942 and introduce a comprehensive plan that protects public health at no direct cost to homeowners that also addresses inequities and uses safe materials. Thank you.
Thank you. Next witness.
Good morning. My name is Joshua Kleenberg with New York League of Conservation Voters. Thank you, Chair Gennaro, and members of the committee for the opportunity to testify today. New York LCV agrees that lead—that lead pipes in New York City should be replaced within a 10-year period. However, we strongly oppose Intro 942, and we urge the council to withdraw this bill from consideration. With limited time, here's two reasons why. Intro 942 leaves it up to private property owners to foot the bill, which could be $10,000 to $15,000, as we've heard today, for a mess that was created by New York City, which allowed, and even in times encouraged and required, lead pipes to be used until 1961. It also places the burden on scheduling lead pipe replacements onto property owners, not the city, potentially creating unsafe work practices as well as logistical headaches for your community. I've passed along a map, which I've shared with you, of DEP data as of March 2024. Roughly on this side here, New York City has 857,000 pipes delivering drinking water. 40% of them are lead or possible lead. So, we're talking about 338,000 properties around the city in every single district. If Intro 942 is enacted as written, that means hundreds of thousands of appointments will have to be made in New York City by property owners, causing some streets to be ripped up a dozen times or more. If you flip the map over here, here's an example of a neighborhood in Queens. You'll see along the street, there are nearly 50 households with lead pipes along the street, meaning that without coordination, a section of the street will be ripped up possibly every two to three months on average over a 10-year period. And even worse, the physical disturbances created by each replacement does lead to the possibility of lead leaching into other people's pipes. So, in sum and substance, we urge the council to withdraw this bill, to work with the advocates that have spoken today and experts around the country who are working on this issue, and we are happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. I look forward to that colloquy going forward. And with no other witnesses to be heard, and now—oh, okay. Oh, these are for—anybody on Zoom? If you're on Zoom, no one's on Zoom. And so, with all the—with all the testimony concluded—oh, hang on. Where do I start? Where do I start? Here? Oh, if we have inadvertently missed anyone, red is testified today yet to be called. Please use the Zoom raise hand function if you are testifying remotely, and you will be called in the order here. This is—we got to read this. Has been raised. If you are a testifying person, please come to the dais. Seeing none, I will now close the hearing. Thank you for members of the administration and members of the public who joined us today to discuss this very important topic. The last line is—the hearing is adjourned, but before I say that, I want to thank this—what's going on? Come on. Just want to thank you all. We'll have, you know, ongoing colloquy to get to something that we can all support. This is my hope, and I appreciate—very much appreciate your presence here today. With that said, this hearing is adjourned.